Okay, so then you get to about 2005 and the receivership money, they're no longer available. And so between 2005 and the present day, we've just kind of gone along. We've not had exceptional needs that were not unmet by the county. I mean, if we, our goal was to come over here and say, hey, we have a problem coming. And we found the commission to be very responsive to those sorts of things. And, you know, even in the case of the public defender. You know, we took the 10 grand we got from the commission, embarrassed the public defender into about another $25,000 worth of money and got almost all the backlash. I don't think we have anybody sitting in jail that doesn't have a lawyer. Now, the two things that drive this are the new judge, which we've known about since 2018, and COVID. And, you know, I can tell you, I've been here nearly every day since the craziness started. And, you know, a little did I know that we would also become the AV technicians and the janitors in residence for the courthouse. Because it's court people that are spraying everything down, that are wiping everything down, doing all sorts of things. And I have, I have explored just about every combination of wires and plugs you can make so that we can have video court. So that my juvenile officers, and I've had a positive COVID in the juvenile officers, going to another county that may not have been as diligent as we are about the rules and trying to keep everybody out of the building. Because our great fear is when somebody tests positive, is shutting it all down. And everything takes longer. I mean, everything that should take an hour takes two, everything that should take a day takes two. So the two things that are driving are, one is, we've got to have a space for the new judge. And it's coming and we've got to deal with it. And we weren't able to deal with it last year, which is probably we should have done it, so that we'd have that done. But we're going to have to have some resources available. And we picked this number of 75 between the $18,000 and the $125,000, two bids we got. Basing it, some went on, we thought it took about 60 to do Judge Joyce's courtroom a number of years ago. So that's kind of where that number is. We recognize that number is subject to, you have to bid it out. You know, it could come in less, it could come in more, it's just a place to start. But it looks like to us that that would be enough money. And we historically have not wasted the county's money. We've returned money to the county, we've done all those sorts of things like that. The COVID thing's a different thing. And we were over here one time talking about COVID money. And we don't understand what the rules are. But we don't want to make a budget request that impairs the county's ability to attract COVID money. If it needs to be set out separately, that's one thing about doing it. I mean, we have remote clerks not in the building because we can't separate them. And, and so we're, the part of this entire discussion, and if you read the entire statutory scheme, that's what it's supposed to be, is the discussion. Because I don't know how I'm going to know what the actual and estimated operating deficit from prior years, all interest redemption charges, capital projects expenditures, total expenditures remaining, all of those sides on the reasonable side. I mean, that's, the commission has that information. And so what we needed to do was start this dialogue, okay? To talk about how we're going to meet these needs, the new judge and deal with the COVID thing. We've got a couple of different ideas. But we really need, it has to be addressed. Now, this whole statutory scheme is set up to start early, which is one of the reasons, you know, when I talked to juvenile, we're going to let juvenile deal with this juvenile always has, for a couple of different reasons. One, it's worked very well. Secondly, that is so much personnel, and so much personnel is county-based, whether it's benefits or retirement or all sorts of things like that. So we're, juvenile is going to do as we always have done. But these were three areas that we thought were dramatically affected by COVID. And the other half of it is, is open up the book, see how you do this. And this is say, this is how you do this. But this is not wrapped, wrap our letter in a brick and throw it through the window and drive by. Okay? We need some help, you know, from your side to be able to provide for the new judge. And how do we do the COVID things so we can maximize the reimbursement? You know, because we're, we're getting extra equipment, we need extra equipment so we can put people at home. If you've been over the courthouse, you've seen the shower curtains. I mean, we've done, I mean, we bought every piece of plexiglass Lowe's had that first week. We were working on this actually late February, March, Donnell and I got together and said, what's it going to take to put people off-site? Okay? And first Asuka says she can't do it. Then Asuka said, well, you can't do it, but we don't really want to. And then when COVID hit full force, then eventually they came up with a way that we could put people off-site and give them, be it not T-1 speeds, but access to the computer systems. And we still have people working off-site. And we've got some people that were quarantined because they were potentially sat next to somebody who sat next to somebody who tested positive. You know, we're trying really hard for that. But the purpose of today's meeting is not to send a letter wrapped in a brick, go through a window. The purpose of today's meeting is to say, we need to have this dialogue, we need to know what we can do, we need to know how we meet these two needs we have to have, which is provide for the fifth judge. And the, how we, how we ask for the COVID stuff so that it maximizes your ability to spend CARES money on it. You know, we just roll it into the budget and just say, well, we just need more, you know, that. And can we do it with an extra security guy? Can we use, you know, we're thinking of a security aide because we're running interference at the gate. And I'm sure this would be difficult for you to believe that not every defendant in the system is a reasonable individual. Okay? And so I need a sort of above-average bear at the gate. We've been using marshals, but then I have to, I also need marshals in the courthouse to enforce the mask rules, to enforce the distancing rules. You know, we've got this, you know, for me to do a law day last year, a hundred people came in, sat in the hallway and in the courtroom, we called the cases, we got them done. Today, we stop at the gate. Do you really need to come upstairs? And we have a list of those people. Then if you're going to come upstairs, have you been exposed to COVID anywhere? That's the question. Are you running a temperature? That's the thermal scan. Are you got a mask on? We've got to argue about the mask. And we have directed from the spring board to have masks because they've lost several courthouses. Kansas City has yet to have a jury trial. St. Charles?
Our St. Louis, the city.
Yeah, okay. I got 10 murder cases. You know, at some point, this is annoying, but saying your speedy trial right was violated is a different deal. So that's, you know, we, we need some help, we need some dialogue back from the commission on, on how to do this. Because, I mean, there's, there's CARES money out there, and this stuff would strike me that it would be CARES money. It's stuff we're doing that we would not have done but for COVID. So that's what the purpose, we have to start somewhere. That's what this statute says, this is how you start, is you're all, well, I'm kind of a follow-the-rules sort of guy. You know, I held my hand up and swore that I would do that. There's two people in this room, I, they held their hand up, we had the same oath there, although I know there was some reticence to the I do part, as I remember, as far as that goes. So, here we are.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, one, your COVID-related expenses are things you've already incurred or things that you plan to incur next year in the budget? Because the CARES Act money has a pretty set timeline at the moment.
See, that's something we don't know.
Well, we, we have kept a list of everything we've spent, we're going to submit it to the county for reimbursement. Some of this, though, I think is going to be some, I think the aide's going to have to be additionally starting in, on January 1st, 2021.
So, right now, the restrictions on the funding that we have received ends December 31st.
Okay.
So we have till March to spend it, but it has to be incurred by December 31st.
Okay.
So, um...
So you, so what you're telling me is, there's no, there's no CARES money for 2021?
Currently, no.
No.
Okay, okay.
So, that could change. Obviously, the CARES Act stuff changes daily, as most of you know. It could change depending on what happens through the end of this year. But as of right now, we don't have a set aside amount of funding from CARES Act for 2021.
Okay.
Um, so I definitely think that we want to see what you've spent already, but there may not be that additional funding next year.
So, what's, what you're telling me is that at this point, a line item for staffing relative to COVID after the first year, you don't think that there's CARES money for?
Uh, no.
Okay. That's the purpose I have to make.
We put your part-time security, we, he's already in our, in our, because one of the first things we're looking at is county costs. And so he is in it. That's so far as all we have received. So we do need to know...
And, and on the agenda next Tuesday is to talk about some of the internal county costs related to COVID. So if that's something you can get us of things you've already spent by next Tuesday's meeting, that we're on there to talk about that.
I thought that had been submitted, but I can, I can follow up on that. Because we've, we've tracked that, you know, whether it be plexiglass or, I know I bought a hundred-dollar shower curtains and shower rods and things like that. But if we don't have that to you, we'll get that to you.
Yes.
Because we've, you know, we've done that stuff. We were able to make, you know, some stuff, for example, we repurposed the court reporter's new laptops. You know, we repurposed those so courts could take them home. Now, that's not going to live forever. At some point, we're going to be told we can't use the old court reporter laptops on the system. But that's, you know, something that, that we, we looked at, you know, how can we keep the courts going? So, but that's, we'll look at that. But that's, I mean, that's important to me is, 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 you know, at this point, there's no, there's no money for 2021, so, so putting staffing in the budget, I mean, that's something obviously that we could, we could, you know, we would take out if it's not there.
So, I have up on the screen here, let's kind of take just a walk through some of the numbers that you guys supplied to me yesterday. So, this one on the screen here is court services. So that's the judges, court reporters, court administrator, they all fall into this budget right here. The one, again, you'd walk through some of the additional office supplies and meetings and travel. But can we talk through, number one, we used to receive almost $8,000 in jury script, I think it was a reimbursement for grand jury costs. We have not seen that in the last two years. We would, yeah. Um, I know I've asked a few times, but that's something, you know, that revenue kind of offset some of your expenses. It's gone away. We would really like to see that back to offset some of that.
Okay.
Um, and then number two, on the jury script expense, we went from 65 to 75.
All right.
Um, I don't have a problem with that, but most of the time, we've taken the opinion in the past that the extra $10,000 for jury trials, that we would kind of approach as we knew they were going to go. And we've actually talked about creating a sub-account in there for those expenses, especially if you guys have to sequester a jury or something. We understand that cost is going to be more than a regular jury trial. But can we move that if we know for sure that trial's going?
Well, the problem is, is because we've had delays and we've got 10 murder cases pending, we, we believe that is a conservative estimate of how much it's actually going to cost. I mean, we can move it, that's fine, but we're backlog since we really shut down jury trials from March to, I guess you had the first one in July?
I had the first one in July.
And, and I, you know, so I...
I mean, I think that, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and we've always sort of tried to come over here and say, this is what we're looking at. And then when we got the case from Wayne County, who came over here and said, this is what we're looking at. I mean, we wouldn't expect you to put the hundred grand we think that case will take to try in the budget, but I don't want you coming up and saying, oh my God, why didn't you mention it? So, what, what, the purpose of this discussion point was really to reflect that it takes more hands to run a jury. Um, and that's, the other half of it are all the civil trials. So this is, you got in a car accident, you need compensation, or somebody you loaned money doesn't pay you back and you need to come to court, or some sort of case like that, is, you know, we're looking at, at conducting those off-site. And then obviously, we'll have costs associated with those. But to get a big enough room that you can spread everybody out so that you can pick a jury and try a civil case off-site. So, I understand what you're saying, but we need to convey that we think it's going to be more expensive to try a jury trial than last year.
Right.
Because it just takes more personnel, it's slower. You know, the case where we come in, pick a jury, have a trial, order pizza and have a verdict, we can't even order pizza anymore. You know, we have to order box lunches because of the COVID thing. But I think that's, I mean, I think that's an area where, with the, with the understanding we've always had, is that we're going to have to push on these trials because you can ask the sheriff, but everybody I got in jail is a bad dude. Okay? The poor people, we've got most of them out. But when I went through that list and there were, you know, seven murderers in jail, assault first, that's assault with a deadly weapon with serious bodily injury, um, we were full of, we've got the gun people running around the town shooting people up. You know, we're going to have to have some trials. And so I, I expected we would push harder, and we've been pushing harder on prosecutor's office particularly, but we're going to have to have more trials. And, but, I mean, with the understanding of the trial's cost, with the trial's cost, you know, we would come back and then, and say, you know...
I mean, you can see up there, obviously, this year, that activity's way down.
Yeah.
So we, we projected 65, but we're only at 20. Um, I think that is an estimate, any time you look at it, any year can be different than, it's an estimate.
Right.
So, I guess my opinion is, let's estimate the 65 like we normally do, but if you have a trial that is outside of the normal circumstance, it's a jury we're going to have to sequester or put up in a hotel or whatever, that, obviously, that's a cost we're going to have to cover, but we're going to cross that bridge when we get to it, and it's something that could be moved from contingency to cover that.
Okay.
And I think the second reasoning for that is to track that cost separately. We've never done that in the past, but I really think we should, just to get a, a handle on what those jury trials that are sequestered cost us versus a regular.
We're going to have to try them separately because we have a claim to make against Wayne County.
And I think in that circumstance too, your, your budget would change because you would have an offsetting revenue line in the budget to offset that cost. Because you would be billing them to reimburse us for that cost. So that one would change it as well, because you would have an offsetting revenue line for that expense.
Well, that assumes to be correct.
Well, last time we had one with, gosh, three years ago, a capital murder case, it was $30,000.
It was just, it was way past $30,000. That was just the time you put them up in the hotel and you fed them.
It wasn't additional staff.
Did we get reimbursed for that?
No.
Uh, if it comes from a county on a change of venue, yes. Well, we, we have the right to go to the county and request payment.
But if they don't have any money, you're not going to see it anyway.
Yeah.
We actually got, and I can't remember the exact status, we had a bill Rudy Neve worked one for us to try to figure out, to get authority to get money. And now we've got to get some money in it, you know, in, in the harbor.
He had the bill to establish the fund.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's beside the fact, though, that right now, we don't know if we'll get paid back.
And, and like I said, who knows? I mean, we've lost six months of, of civil jury trials. And, um, like I said, they're going to be more expensive because the only way we can do those are off-site. So, I, I just think the purpose of this discussion is to say, every jury trial we get to have, and I'm hoping we get to have some, are going to cost more.
Well, if things open up, we could have a lot more next year.
Yeah.
If you're playing catch-up, but...
Well, yeah, that's assuming that the COVID goes away.
Yeah.
I agree with Kristen on LCB is 65, and then I agree with you. Hey, we've been warned.
Okay. I think that's, that's the purpose of having that discussion.
I'm just one no.
No, I'm good.
So, I mean, it's just a discussion at the moment. Um, can you guys tell us a little bit about that insurance line and what that insurance that we're paying covers? That was the other one that increased more than normal, just because you're adding an additional judge.
Yeah, yeah, they increased by, by 25%.
Right.
And plus whatever the premium increase went in there. That's, that's the insurance that indemnifies the judges, or should they get sued? You don't see that near as much as you used to. On the other hand, if a judge gets sued, it becomes an obligation of the county. And that's kind of one of the reasons we've always had that.
Okay.
Why would a, why would a state employee be covered by insurance from the county and the county would be at fault?
Well, I can tell you that the case came out of St. Louis. The judge was accused of sexual harassment, judgment was entered against the judge, and the law found it to be an obligation of the county. I agree. Okay? But that's how it comes out with it, and then, you know, none of those cases are settling easy.
And then the county has no authority to fire the judge.
Well, no, they're elected, so no.
Yeah, and they're elected.
They're all elected, that is true.
Statewide, statewide election.
No.
No, it's only the county.
It's all county, we're all elected.
Right, but you're, it's a, you're a state employee.
They ran the same ballot, Sam did, didn't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the same people voted for Sam voting for me, although I think more voted for Sam.
It was a bad case, I think.
Yeah.
Well, they're going to name everybody in a poll.
Sure.
Yeah, the county will be brought in.
Yeah.
So, I, I think if we take that $10,000 out with the idea that it obviously may have to go back in, then your number is not that much more, bottom line, in this budget compared to last year. Again, I would like you guys to look into that jury script and see what that is, because like I said, that revenue kind of offsets some of your expenses and helps us out in the long run. Um, do you guys have other questions about this budget at the moment, anything you want to talk about why they're here?
Nope.
The one thing that's not on this list, because, and this is the second most amazing thing to me I learned, was when I asked how to do the budget, how Donnell was, was told to do the budget is different than how Donnie was told how to do the budget, was different than how Julie Cole, who sends me a screenshot that looks like that, okay, is, is we think it will take $75,000 to set up a courtroom of some form for the new judge.
And I think that's something that could come out of our capital improvement fund and not out of our general fund.
And, and our problem is, is we're two years into this and nobody has said they're going to do this. And I, we've got to have the courtroom. And I, I don't know how you reconcile that between two, if we had done it last year and it was in the capital improvement budgets and then the bids were out and all sorts of things like that, but having waited to the last moment, it's, and, and, from our point of view, we don't really care where it comes from. Okay? You could put it in there, okay, and bid it out of capital improvements, put it in capital improvements, pay for it out of capital improvements, and we'll never spend that money. But...
So, I think the question regarding the courtroom is, that's something that really you need to start working on now. Your judge comes January, correct?
We, we, we've been there. I mean, I've had conversations with pretty much everybody at one point or another, and then, well, we're going to do this, or we're going to do this, or we're going to do this, and we are now stuck in this position.
Well, we bought 209 Adams with all kinds of expectations. And then, really, just to be honest, John, COVID has just kind of put everything on hold. We're trying to, to just maintain everything.
I've often said...
So, it's, it's, you know, it, yeah.
I've often said, yours is a difficult job because you have food for 50 and 100 miles to feed. But our problem is, is, and what makes us different than 19 or the bridge or the health department is, is because we're the third branch of government, we don't get to say, we're not going to, we're not going to have that trial this year. You know, we don't have enough money, we don't have enough space. I mean, the law just does not let us do that. But, I mean, I think that if, if there was a way to put it in your capital improvement fund, then this money never gets spent. Okay? Because at the end of the day, we just need the courtroom. But we have to do something to make sure that there are funds available to do the courtroom. But we would just soon it come out of whatever fund is op, is optional for you people, it's going to have to be bid, we would like to think it can be bid down. You know, we're, we're guessing at the number.
We've spent very little money on capital improvements just because, now, today HVACs are going down all over the place. But, but I mean, we really, we really haven't spent any money. So, you know, to me, this is a good stopgap, is it going to, is it going to solve the problem? No, no. But at least, you know, for the immediate future, it would. It's not going to be, but, you know, heaven help us if...
We were saying, you know, if it's in there and you provide the courtroom out of capital proven money, we're not going to spend this on top of it.
So I guess I haven't been privy to those conversations because I would have told you that you're going to have to share, which is what you're going to have to do now. So...
Share what?
Courtrooms. So, I mean, that's basically where we're at. So, there's not a courtroom to have it, so you're going to have to either share space or, or find someplace else to, to do it. But, I mean, but like I said, I'm, I'm a short timer, so, but you gotta, you're going to have to figure it out.
Let me add to it?
You got anything you want to say?
I don't have the perfect fix for it, but I think, probably not planning on using the commission chambers for some of it.
And, you know, and I tried cases over in here, here's what the problem is. In 2007, when I started in here, I got Ms. Azel, we came over here, I grabbed the file and we had a trial. Okay? In 2020, for us to have the trial, I would have to bring two laptops over here, get on your network, I would have to make sure that Kay could get on your network or her machine connects into the network, because we don't have any paper. It's all on computers. And then, then we would be, then we'd be there, we'd have to VPN into the court system so we could have access to all that sort of stuff like that. I mean, all of a sudden, it's not like what we did in 2007. Kay picked up her machine, I grabbed the file, we walked over here. You know, that's, there are hearings that you could have over here, you can't have any dockets because you can't run that many people through the building. But we've, we've tried that, and, and like I said, the difference between then and now is the computer stuff.
And security.
The biggest problem I'm having now is, I like to have a third monitor, because when we're running the video, I mean, usually I've got the case file over here, and I've got the other stuff going on over here, and this monitor's taking up of the video. You know, because we're having the video court as opposed to in-person court. So, I mean, there are, the, the, where that actually works, and I, I came over here and tried it, okay? I mean, it wasn't like I'm making this up. I came over here, I brought a laptop over here...
Yeah, I know, we've used it for other things, so, it's either that or you got to share at this point. The state gives us this stuff and says, here, just deal with it, so, I mean, do they have any money to help us? Because we've got no jail there that, we can fix that up. We talked about that before too. We had, we were going to have a nice courtroom out of it, that would take care of all of this.
The state didn't provide any money because the statute puts it on the county.
I know.
I mean, here's the good news is, it's almost close to $3 million in payroll. Judges, clerks, and more recently, court reporters, the state pays for it. But prior to probably '75, which was the big, last big court reorganization, it was all on the county. And that's what, that's what the law says, is all those expenses except for those salaries specifically assumed to the state. So that's, I mean, that's how we got there. So that's where we are on, on that point. But I, I came over here, I came over here with a laptop, we tried to get on the county wireless, could we get on that and could we get the information that we needed? And, you know, it's almost as bad as it is today where everything takes twice as long. So, I think that's where we are there.
And I think if you go off-site, Judge Joyce and I had talked, is she's found a site, but it's $400 a day. I mean, it's, it's, going off-site is, is not going to be cheap.
Well, that, and then it's the extra staffing. I mean, we, we looked like it would take two extra people to run that trial. We've looked at some other places. I mean, we've gone out and looked to see, but we can't, you know, we're telling inmates, you have to sit in jail and you don't get a trial because they don't have a way to give you a trial. Okay, in the near, but I think I've got twenty-nine, three-day or longer jury trials that they want set at twenty-one. That's in my division. I can answer for Judge Joyce or Judge Gray.
There's at least, I, I've had to delay all my civil trials, which would last a week, and that started, and I postponed all the civil ones and criminal cases. So it, I, I've got at least probably twenty-five. Now, they're not all gonna go, obviously, but we don't know unless we give them the ability to have a trial. Once they know they've got a trial and they're showing up, a lot of cases.
Having to go to work.
So if we add the small courtroom, is it gonna speed things?
It'll give us the ability to manage a docket that's getting more and more difficult because of COVID. I mean, if, if we don't have the courtroom space available, then you've gotta keep onto light cases.
So it will speed up?
It, it will keep us going in the direction we've been going.
Okay, well, let us have all courts going at once.
And that's seventy-five thousand?
That's, that's, that's our least worst guess.
Where was that at?
It's in the letter. It was on the screen.
No, I mean, where are you wanting to do the smaller courtroom?
Right across.
On the fourth floor where the jury room is.
Okay, I think you were talking about that a while ago when I was reading through stuff and.
Yeah, we, we think that that room
is the only big.
is the only room big enough that it makes sense to. And then, like I said, it's not like we walk in there with the court reporter and your file. I mean, there's the electronics that gotta be into it. I mean, that, that's a bigger part of it.
I think we're gonna spend a lot doing it over here extra than if we keep it over in the courthouse because of security steps. So I think there's
and it, it may well not.
a trade-off.
It may well not take that kind of money. That's, like I said, we gotta bid for like twenty grand.
There's seem to work we've done over there and how much it costs. They see, they see it's a state or county job, man.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But we.
And I, I think that there's a lot of, um, Brian, I asked to be here. I mean, a lot of electronic things and things that are gonna have to go into that courtroom to make it work just because they are electronic records.
But Brian can do anything.
Brian can, and, and I can tell you that's the best thing to come out of this county in a long time. I cannot tell you how much help Brian has been in helping us work.
He's not gonna get out of the room.
His new title is, oh, great one. I bow to him when I go, oh, great.
With that, James Passworth, you can't log on.
Yeah, so.
So would you guys be open to at least bidding to see what it would take to get that room?
For their temporary?
For their temporary fix?
It's gonna be held a lot cheaper than doing something with the old jail.
Oh, I, we couldn't do, I, it's.
So, I mean, I thought the price was reasonable. And we knew it was coming. Is there any way the state can give us any money to help out with this? They're throwing it in our laps.
No.
But they'll, they'll give you, okay.
They're gonna.
They actually is throw it in your laps. I mean, they're not gonna give you money for the courtroom because they don't give anybody money for courtrooms. Okay? Uh, because the law says county pays. Now, having said that, what they do do for us is they'll give the judge a computer. Takes two computers to be a judge, but they'll give a judge one of the computers. They'll give, if we get a separate clerk for that judge, and there's, they always have in the past.
There's a good.
Okay, good chance we'll get another, an FTE on the, on the state payroll for that judge. They'll give that person their computer. Okay? Uh, they will help us with the video. I was able to talk him out of an updated video unit. The video unit's five grand.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'd like to see is what else we can talk them out of.
Yeah, I mean, and we've been, I mean.
Since they're giving us a judge here, you know, bless their hearts. Thank you.
Well, it's.
Well, the legislature gave you the judge and.
Yeah, we probably didn't need that.
We've been, we've been, as long as I've been here, at least two, if not three judges down.
The highest percentage that we've had a need for going over than any other, any other circuit.
You know, and, and we turned down, we could have forced this another circuit judge, which of course is another judge and a court board, which is not really what we need. And then Cotton would tell you, I mean, having watched down there, we need two associate circuit judges.
But you had Schomar coming to, you had, you've had visiting judges to help with the workload, but that's.
So we, we've, we've done that and we've kept moderately up to date. But I mean, like I said, today, everything just takes longer, right? It's been an hour on video right before I came over here on something that should have taken thirty minutes. But you gotta get there, you gotta get the video, everybody's gotta be able to see each other, you gotta do all those sorts of things and things like that. So, like I said, the seventy-five, which a number we kind of based that on what it cost to do Judge Joyce's courtroom, probably fifteen years ago.
Oh, at least. And it's, it's gonna look a little different, but the technology is gonna be different.
It's no Brazilian wood or anything.
No, no, no. It, we were looking very conservative and we've gone.
I think it's gonna probably take more than that, but.
But yeah, yes, we've looked at, you know, we look constantly, you know, for the grants and the resources and what we can talk them out of and, you know.
And we have to have this done by January first, so that's gonna be another thing because we've got, everybody's busy right now. Holidays.
But.
Might have to share for a little while.
Yeah. Well, and, and we expect that because we're not starting. Quite frankly, this would be one-one money. This wouldn't be twenty-twenty money.
Well, so I guess if you guys would decide that you wanted to move forward and look into that cost, it could be something that you use twenty-twenty money for.
And we would tell you that we're not gonna spend the money on top of, you know, it's not gonna be seventy-five on a capital improvements and then seventy-five on a courts. Okay? Now, if you come in here thirteen out of capital improvements, I'll tell you something different. But we gotta do something, and if we don't do anything, then we've got, we're, we're not prepared and we've not done our jobs to make sure that we can, you know, effectively adjudicate cases for the citizens of the county. So.
No, I think we need to move ahead. I'm one, but I think we need to.
But that's, I mean, that's a, that's a commission thing. If it's particularly, if it's twenty-twenty, it's a commission thing. So you know kind of where we are.
We like your wife coming home and telling you she's pregnant. You're gonna lose.
That would be an immaculate consumption.
Hey, it happens. So you'd lose your naked room, you'd have to get ready to go vet, you'd have to get you a minivan.
I'd go.
What's, what's the next one on the list? Because if someone says something they wish they hadn't.
Uh, did you have your analogies?
Yeah, I just want you guys to make sure you know that, I mean, if we would decide to bid it, we're at least thirty days out on a bid.
Yeah.
So.
If you're ready to pull that.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna at least bid it and see what that cost looks like, that's something we probably should move fairly quickly on.
And again, it doesn't reject if it comes in three times what we thought or something.
What else we gotta look at? Not it?
Two more.
So, um, circuit clerk's budget. Um, I am a little concerned, obviously. The revenues are down. And the big change here is the additional part-time. I don't think that there was a lot of changes besides that. Um, so currently, right now, we pay for, I think, a thousand-hour person at eleven dollars an hour. Is that right? Um, to do scanning.
Is revenue down because we haven't had anything coming through?
I, I gotta figure that.
I mean.
I mean, that's something that's. You didn't get to close your office just because people weren't coming through. Still had to be there and operate, or fewer people.
Right. How do we get our money? People pay us. So if we're not collecting from anyone because they're, we're in a lockdown and COVID, we're not getting, we're not getting paid.
So probably that's not, not any control we have.
The filings were down. People weren't, I mean, and, yeah.
Other than next part-time.
We're going through the roof.
I think, I think what Donnell had on there was some extra staffing.
Some extra staffing because we don't have anyone to clean the courthouse as far as sanitizing it. And I, I know this should.
So that's COVID-related there.
It should go into maintenance, but we definitely need to have someone clean the courthouse.
Okay, that's true. For next year, we're looking at it for next year.
I mean, we don't currently have additional funding for next year to do COVID.
I would think that this would be COVID-related.
Well, when you just gave us a discussion right before you came in here, that there's no COVID money for twenty-twenty-one.
Right now.
I've heard a discussion and I forgot, Donnell.
Twenty-twenty, and then we could add a part-time person in to clean the courthouse because nobody cleans the courthouse. We have a sweep, someone sweeps once a week, but there's no sanitation after somebody's been coming in and out other than a spraying, uh, Lysol on the seats that we're sitting on. So I think it's unsafe.
The, the last thing, and this is my error, that Donnell had talked about was, is some more laptop resources to keep people at home or rotate people through at home. Obviously, many people who have to be quarantined for COVID aren't sick sick. They can work at home. And that might be something that would qualify under the CARES Act money is, is some additional laptops. Like I said, right now, we repurpose the laptops we bought for the court reporters to, to, to take-home units. So we had units available for that, but that's, that's a short-term fix. That was our solution in January, February, and March to do that.
So how many laptops are you talking?
I think eight would be appropriate. I, I gotta have staff rotating and I can't have them taking their monitors and their computer and their scanner, everything home with them. It would be easier.
Why not?
Because then they gotta bring it back. Because then they gotta bring it back.
We tried that, okay? And it did not work as well as we expected. Okay?
Well, we do is we get Cotton to take all his doors and the roof and stuff. That, that Jeep will hold all kinds of stuff. He left.
He left.
So I can, I can.
I mean, we, we, we tried that and it, it didn't work that well. And then, then you always have the problem of moving state people, state property, you know, that's not designed to be transported. So that, that's something, but if that's something that you think would qualify under CARES Act, then we need to make that request, not in the budget, but to the commission. But I think we're kidding ourselves that we don't think this is gonna be a problem in twenty-twenty-one.
Well, but, but that would give them the option that once they've been bought, they can continue to use them and work them home. Yes, and we can rotate the staff. And we could have, um, staff being able to check this out and have win there. And then when they bring it back, the other person can take one home so that I can continue to rotate staff.
Well, we were talking yesterday about county expenses for COVID. The courts were mentioned. We just don't, didn't have anything other than the part-time security. So.
We've got, I mean, it really kind of falls into three areas. It falls into increased staffing, the, the hands it takes because everything's spread out and takes longer. Fixed equipment, which are like all the Plexiglas shields we built, shower curtains we hung. I mean, one of the problems is, is keeping the social distancing. You know, in our current configurations, we might be able to move some stuff around. But at the end of the day, you're trying to run an office, sort of in a clear shower curtain. And so there may be some, some harder expenses. There might be new cubicles or something else like that would let us, you know, do that social distancing. Uh, and the third thing are the equipment needs that let us do that as opposed to chairs, seats, dividers would be the laptops, um, which let people take work home and operate from home over through the VPN. But if that's, you know, if that's something you think is reimbursable under CARES, then that would make more sense. But that's, again, we think that they're gonna be needed in twenty-twenty-one. We think they're gonna be needed, um, to cycle people through the building. The current recommendations are to keep everybody at home that you can keep at home. But you can't really do that because if I send my clerk home to do a notice of entry, she still has a piece of paper that has to be mailed to those sorts of people. So it's, it's, it's a, it's quite a system that Donnell set up trying to collect them. So anyhow, that's one of the things that, that's not on that because we thought that really looked like COVID, and we just needed to know how to present that to the commission. But I think that's, that's in, in her budget, that's really what you were talking about. And, and the cleaning thing is, is, you know, I got a building with peeling paint, I got a peeling with mold, I got a building with no hot water. And, um, we need somebody to, to clean. And it's, and it's gonna have to be sort of an ongoing cleaning because people keep coming through the building as we, you know, try to loosen up that stuff. And right now, we're doing it, you know, we're doing it. The courts are doing it, you know?
So that's my concern there is the, the part-time's an ongoing cost and there's no guarantee that there's ongoing CARES money to pay for that. So.
But I think that you're, this is really two pieces. One is, you know, if there's CARES money, we can get to assist with that. But, you know, we could have somebody who, who would, and that's probably not a court's budget item, but at the same time, we got, we gotta have somebody to help clean the building.
And, and we have used for as long, for the last fifteen years, community service volunteers to the drug court. They've done the clean, a lot of the cleaning, they've done the sweeping, and we are not even letting them come back into court for court appearances. We're doing them. So we have stopped that, and so that's been another whole issue. But the county's had twenty to twenty-five hours a week of free volunteer work through the community service, through the drug courts to help keep the courthouse going. And, uh, right now, we, we can't bring them in for courts. We're not gonna bring them in to clean.
So for twenty-twenty stuff, we can get somebody to do that. But for twenty-twenty-one, we don't know if we're gonna have CARES money for that. So we're gonna have to do like everybody else is doing and, you know.
Guess.
Get some gloves and start wiping stuff down.
And we've all done it. I can tell you that the bleach doesn't agree with some of the finishes on the furniture, but it sure smells good.
I agree with my hands.
What's the next one you got?
Do you guys have any other questions with Donnell? Like I said, the other items in her budget stayed fairly close to almost exactly what it was last year. The only concern is, again, the reduced revenue, but we think that's due to COVID as well.
I have any more questions?
Um, so the last one we're gonna look at is, um, the marshals. I will say that, um, I've had some discussions with Donnie and the judge, and I really would like to break the pre-trial release program out separately from the marshal's budget, just so that we can see the cost of that program separately. Right now, you have to go through here and kind of break out salaries and expenses from the marshals just to see what that program costs. I really would like to break that apart and, um, have them be their own departments. Um, so that was something I was thinking about doing in the budget itself. So we would create new lines for pre-trial release and pull their information out.
And we would be in support of that because I got to tell you, I remember coming over here asking for thirty-five thousand dollars for part-time to give us some bond review information. And I was kind of astonished at the size. At that time, we were doing twenty or thirty people. We're doing two hundred people. Um, you know, I got a guy who's in, he's sitting in jail until I get a scram bracelet for him. So we would fully support separating that out. We appreciate first the support of the commission for this program because as the sheriff will tell you, while we spar on many different things, we have got the jail, we have, the poor people are out of the jail and the bad people are in the jail. And we do that because we have better information. I mean, for years, what I had was, well, he's charged with this and he, we, we think he's a bad guy. And, and we had to make a decision based on those two pieces of information. And then, you know, we're, we're figuring out that this guy can go home because there's a home plan. He can have a monitor if he's, you know, an offender and we're worried about reoffense or drinking again, you know, it lets us, and if you think about it, you know, particularly in the area of domestic violence, then it lets that person be somewhat productive. But it saves the jail for the people who drive around and shoot people.
So you'll see the most significant change in this budget is the salaries. Um, they talked about an additional marshal, but in the proposed for next year, we've also picked up an additional pre-trial release person. So we hired two this year to kind of replace the one that retired and the other one that we thought could possibly be retiring. In their budget, there's that additional person because that one who we thought was retiring is still in the budget for next year. So.
I think Rob's retired, didn't he?
Okay, well, that's, that's marshal.
Marshals.
Okay, we're talking about pre-trial.
So the most significant change here, and you can see by the bottom line, the net revenue and expense, um, is in that salary line and the part-time line.
Now, that part-time line includes, we were, what we were calling a security aide. We're not certain that that wouldn't overlap some with the additional screening person, although we would like to have a person that had a little better experience for dealing with them.
So I have that part-time broken out on the screen if you wanna see it. And then the other salary information is broken out in their letter. I don't have it broken out in the system.
Yeah, the only, only thing that I saw there was, you know, it looked like a one percent plus a merit pool or something.
Yeah, I mean, we left that, I mean, this is the only line that we have any sort of salary involved with it. And we just left that to be how the commission handled salaries, you know, merit stuff of the year. Although we're a big proponent of merit raises. So we can reflect, you know, contributions that individuals make to the, to the safety program. But yeah, it's, that, I think you make a really good point there, Kristen, in terms of, you know, how many people we're going to have in pre-trial. Because I thought somebody was going to die.
Yes, yes. So, I mean, I, I think we were anticipating the additional marshal. We maybe were not anticipating an additional pre-trial person.
So if that continues, all the pre-trial expenses are coming out of general revenue. And so that limits, um, in years past, when GR can't give raises, then we don't give raises to anybody. So, um, so as long as GR's taken the full hit of pre-trial services, raises will probably be very slim or nonexistent.
And, and you can see the progression here. I have a couple of years up there of the salaries in this, this department have grown significantly in the last three years. And most of that is due to pre-trial.
But like I said, we would fully support segregating them out because it's, so it ends up consuming our part-time time that we use to fill in for trials and extra hands, kind of gets consumed by pre-trial. But I think that's, a, a, a good question to ask is how many people we're talking about a pre-trial. Because like I said, when I came over here and asked for money, it was $35,000 for some part-time work. But that's, you know.
And the other increase in here, you see $5,000 for our equipment maintenance, which I think is due to the security equipment mainly downstairs.
We put two things in there. Uh, one was there's security costs, the cameras and those sorts of things for the, for the, for the courtroom that'll be associated with that. The other thing was, is we would like to be able to hire the X-ray scanner guy to come by and do preventive maintenance, okay? This is not a maintenance contract, I'm sure it will be time and expense. But my understanding was we lost the last X-ray scanner because it had never been cleaned or maintained, which is not something that the guys downstairs or any sort of physician do. Now, sheriff was gracious enough to, to replace that for us. But, and, and I don't know what it cost, I mean, I estimated $1,500. But it may not cost that much money. We just didn't, couldn't find anybody to call us back to tell us what that would be. But somebody who would come by, six months, once a year, clean out the machine, make sure everything's operating within specs. And that's something we had not done before. And then the price we paid was, we had to get a new machine.
And we had to calibrate it, too.
Yeah, I mean, you've got to do the safety stuff, so.
So.
We just had never expressly provided for that.
So the, um, cameras and things in the new courtroom, would that be a one-time cost or an ongoing cost? Like, could it be part of your $75,000?
Yeah, I mean, it could be part of that number.
Yeah, it's not an ongoing cost.
It's just, it's, okay, okay.
I mean, obviously, we have people come in when they're breaking down and work on it, but.
Right, but it wouldn't be like an ongoing maintenance cost for it or anything, it would be.
That $75,000 or whatever it comes into is not an ongoing cost. That stuff is, once it's fixed, it's fixed.
And I mean, they have in here, obviously, office equipment, like a telephone desk and a computer. Those are also items that could come out of capital as a one-time cost and not out of general fund.
I mean, as part of the discussion is, is that, you know, I was embarrassed to learn how little I understood about the budget. And I know you guys live it pretty much four months a year.
Oh, the quarter.
But the, the formation part of it, so. Is that the last category we got?
So you got designs for the courtroom to be.
We've got some rough ideas, some rough sketches of how we think it gets laid out. But like I said, you know, the, we had people come in and look at it, just we had a ballpark idea. It was not very helpful.
I just think it's going to make sense to do that up there. I think it's going to be more than 75, but I think it's a better investment than trying to juggle things around and double booking and stuff like that.
So, yeah, GBH said something that's 115 to 130 probably budget, so.
That's the first time?
I don't know, Greg said that.
If they keep it down below that, I'm, I'm great with it.
Well, I mean, like I said, the commitment we would make is that if you build the courtroom, we don't need to spend that money on that.
As long as you don't need doors and windows, it's all right. We can get you a square room, so. I, I just think it's going to be a, a better investment for now to get them into a, a room that they can operate in. You know, if it did get thrown on us, we just got to deal with it. As long as you don't like it.
You had brought up about the old jail. I would recommend you guys take a walk through here. Get your shots first and then take a walk through there.
It's been a while, I know the roof is.
It's in bad shape.
Bad, so I think, yeah.
It was, the, when we looked at it, what, six years ago, seven years ago, it was 1.5.
Well, it depends on which way we went, too. If we tried to actually get the floors lined up and we took the whole thing down.
Yeah.
And which is, in my opinion, the way to go. And we get the room big enough to fit the jurors in it. We, I thought we were closer to 4 million.
Well, I think it was.
It changed depending on what you wanted.
If you were going to do the other floor.
Yeah, if you're going to do the fourth floor.
We're going to do the fourth floor is the difference. And then what you did downstairs, whether you just took all of downstairs out and built it new from the bottom up. But that design did allow for a couple of things, that made it made provisions for the public defender.
Handicap entrance, lined the floors up, gave you the bigger courtroom.
And gave us another jurors courtroom.
Yeah.
There was a lot of things that took care of it. Now, there's a price tag on it, too, but, so.
I do think it's time to get a study done of the whole complex because we've added another building to this complex we have now. I think we need somebody to help us do the.
Planning.
Planning and to say what we can do, what your options are.
Based assessment, space assessment.
Right, and make that like a five-year plan of what we want the facilities to look like and where we want people to be.
And if we can't afford that, then you may have to look to.
Can't afford what, the study?
No.
No, to build.
What they recommend.
To build.
You're not going to be able to afford or build what they're going to recommend.
Well, then what, they, they need to give us options of what we have now, what we can do. And if it's in stages, it's in stages.
Well, that's what it's going to have to be. It's going to have to be just like eating an elf and you do it one bite at a time. So we got to pick out which, right now, the courtroom is probably above anything. Uh, you know, and sheriff needs an ID.
It's a temporary, it's a temporary, because one.
Right.
We've only got one courtroom that you can adequately try a case in. I have tried cases up in my courtroom on a regular basis and people are, it's like going on an airplane and sitting there for four weeks or three, or four days. I mean, it's, we are on top of each other and, um, security issues. You guys have been wonderful about getting us the best security in the state of Missouri or the nation, I think. I, I can't say enough about the marshals. They work hard and they are watching. But people are getting more, they need more space and the court, the clerk's offices needs more space. We are, we have done everything we possibly can do in that courthouse. And it's, it, it won't go in much into.
Yeah, we need a real courtroom. I mean, those work, but.
And Greg has mentioned every year since probably five or six years about the, the plumbing, the electrical and everything.
The HP.
And that's going to be millions.
That, that HP.
If we did HP, see, I mean, we're, we're talking millions.
It's, it's moldy everywhere, everywhere. And those, um, returns, the air conditioning there have been the same since I started here in 1993.
I started in '83 in the courthouse, same.
So we're breathing in our own air. We're just circulating it.
You say that while you're wearing a mask.
Every once in a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wait a minute, that's how you make it sense.
I'm just saying.
The protection there to call in to get rid of the molds. That's what they do, they pour bleach down our air conditioner units.
It definitely needs to be.
Well, first they show up and they say, you're dripping on Judge Green.
Yeah, and the stuff comes down, of course, the, the, the stuff, I don't know if Donnell's had it in her office, but when I was down where Judge Green is and where Judge Beadham's office was, anytime they did any repairs, then the ceiling started coming down, down. There's water everywhere.
But Danny's in my, my office about once every 30, 40 days. Because he says you're, I don't know exactly what he says, but you're dripping on Judge Green.
Well, I had, I had Mark Britcher's tip on mine, so it's.
Well, thank you all so much for, I mean, not that I want to conclude, but.
So, I, I want to, yeah, do we want to try to get some estimates and have Jessica work on bidding?
I don't want any more estimates, I want to go out to bid as a design build. Are you guys okay with that?
Okay, that's what I was getting after is who's going to design this, so.
I don't know, design build seems like the fastest way to do it unless you do want to get an architect involved.
No.
No.
I was trying not to say no to it best.
I mean, I think we need to make sure that we do because this is a mistake made a number of years ago. Make sure we got ADA compliance. That became an issue.
Well, that should be all in the language of our kids now, I don't know when that was, but.
That whatever the design is, is ADA compliant, but.
Yeah, and make sure Brian's involved so we have all the drops and things you need to.
We'll have to put one person to work with a purchasing agent so we can get what you want.
Judge Walker would be glad to help.
Okay, well, let's get that moving.
Well, when you're not here.
That bus ran far and hard.
He's already been working on it.
I know he has.
As far as the other facility stuff, we, that's a whole different issue.
Yes.
Yes, we need to keep that on our radar. It's just, that's just a big elephant.
I know.
Well, we need to wait and see what sales tax can do the rest of the year because if it comes back this fall and everything shuts down again, then we're just, you know, SOL. So we've got to be careful. Sales tax is up, let's hope it just stays up.
I think you owe me two rounds because the last two months have been up.
You know, we're going to come, Russia's going to share their vaccine with us. And this will all be behind us and, and I'm going to win a lottery, too.
Um, so yeah, I, I don't have any other questions at the moment. I think there's a few that we'll talk about through the budget process a little more.
Can, can we know what you expect for the CARES budgets? Because we'll come up with what we need for the money and whatever, is there a form you're going to have?
Um, so eventually, there will be an application process. Like I said, we're on the agenda next Tuesday to talk about what the county's internal needs are.
Okay.
Because that application process is kind of for the external agencies to apply to us. Um, there will be a form internally as well, we're not quite there yet. But the discussion is on the agenda for next Tuesday. So any information, bids, ideas, things that you have, if you can come next Tuesday to talk about those.
And it's my understanding that we are going to get reimbursed for the stuff we've already spent. We'll just provide.
Um, if. If you can give us that information so we can vet it through our consultant to make sure everything qualifies, I'm sure that most of it does. But yes, if you can give us what you've already spent first, and then any additional items, again, next Tuesday, if you can have some information available for us, our ideas of what you're looking at.
For additional stuff, yes.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate your time and convening a special meeting for us. I think they, and I'm dying to know now what this looked like prior to 1995, but I don't think they ever contemplated that when we put this, when three commissioners in a room, then it would have to be an official meeting. I mean, the whole thing, if you read the statute in its own, is designed to have, to compel the discussion, okay? So that it's, that we, we know the kind of stuff that we, we don't know, okay? I mean, where, when, where you can get the CARES money, what you can't do the CARES money, what you can do with capital improvement, what you can't do with capital improvement, those sorts of things like that. So, I mean, I, I think if you read the statute, it is really designed to promote a dialogue. And then I will tell you that we'll do it earlier.
And it is much, much quicker this way as far as doing the courtroom, so. Yeah. Rather than just having me here and then we'd have to discuss it again and.
We're, we're game.
And I think there'll be more discussions about the budget going forward. So we'll let you know, other questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
She'll be talking.
How long will we recess until 4:30?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Ah, okay.
Okay, we can have.
11:13, but we went up, so.
Okay, can you help me?
Basically, are you guys saying, go ahead, let's look at some estimates possibly for the work on the.
I think this is me, but it wouldn't connect.
I wanted to make sure.
Okay, let me.
I actually thought just using this room when we weren't using it, but.
Oh, just do more choices.
There were a lot of headaches involved with that.
Right.
And, and what Judge mentioned as well.
He's different.
So I just need to type me in there?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so.
So it would be a miracle, baby, but it, I think it's a good analogy, man. Surprise, you come home, your wife's been fixed.
Is it forward slash or backslash?
And all of a sudden, you find out, hey, I pray.
We got a three-bedroom house.
Elizabeth. Yeah.